Good. Good evening. Today is Monday, September eighth, twenty twenty five. It's five thirty P M. First up on the agenda, city updates. Heather Graham, Mayor is going to do a five-minute presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Updates from Public Works, Bonfort Boulevard. Uh, paving began today, which includes McNaughton. Public improvements for the upcoming Chilean Boholi Festival include the new bollards to assist with traffic control and safety security during the festival. These are removable pylons that help block the street instead of using concrete barriers. These are a semi-permanent solution that can be used for festivals and other large-scale events like parades, or when the street needs to be shut down. Our friends at Trees Please are partnering for the twenty twenty five Community Canopy Program for Eastwood Heights and the Grove Residence. They're giving away a hundred and fifty trees to help with energy saving for homeowners to provide more shade on their property. You can reserve your tree no later than September tenth, so you have a couple more days. Find more information at treesplease.org or following Trees Please Pueblo on Facebook. Don't forget, the Wings of Pride Airshow um is coming to town, featuring the United States Air Force Thunderbirds. They'll be in at Pueblo Memorial Airport, September twenty seventh and twenty eighth. More info online at publowingsofpride.com for tickets or additional details. Um, I'll be hosting three additional town halls in each of your districts. The next one this week is in District Four, Thursday, September eleventh at five thirty P M. At the Robert Hoag Rawlings Library in the Brett Kelly Room. Uh, one hundred East Abrando. That concludes my updates. Happy to take any questions or directions from council.
That's the boss.
Thank you, Chair Gomez. Uh, one more time on the dates for the airshow. Do you wouldn't mind?
September twenty seventh and twenty eighth.
Awesome. Uh, that sounds like it's supposed to be a pretty big event, so hopefully uh we can get some more advertisement on that and hopefully we can get a lot of people to show up to that one.
Anybody else? I think we're good. Agenda item B. East Route Property Update. Randy Evans, Director of Public Health. And we've got Chad Walgram, Program Manager, Public Diversified, excuse me, Public Department of Public Works, fifteen-minute presentation, and I'm trying to read this without my glasses, so. Bear with me. Thank you, guys, for coming.
Good evening, council members. Uh, my name is Randy Evans. If, for those of you I haven't met, I do serve as the um Director of the Pueblo Department of Public Health and Environment. Again, this is Chad Walgram. He's our Director of Environmental Health. He's also with the Department of Public Health. Um, we're here today to just to give you some updates about the property at thirteen ten East Route. And um to tell you about our role with this property and others like it. For reference, this property sits about a half block off of Northern Avenue, behind the Clamshell Restaurant, behind Northern or between Northern and McCauley Avenue. Um, and just a small disclaimer is that PDPHG has only been involved with this uh recently. We are here to report on what we have learned about specific details uh about the proper about the property, but specific details are best asked to city or to the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment. So how we became involved a few weeks ago, Councilor Gomez brought the property to our attention, expressed concerns that it was burned-out building in place and a place where people were dumping trash. He noted that the local neighborhood group called Band was frustrated uh that there had been no action to clean up this property. Um, Aaron Martinez, our Program Manager, who's sits behind me here um for the Solid Waste Program at our Health Department, visited the property. He expressed concerns about potential asbestos, as well as concerns about lead and arsenic, because this site lies within EPA Superfund Boundary. He also noted that the heavy amount of illegal dumping at the site included a large number of used syringes. Following this visit, we contacted Mayor Graham's office. Mayor Graham agreed about the problem and shared that the city had been working with the Colorado Department of Public Health since April of twenty five to get an open-air demolition uh variance permit, so the city could proceed with the cleanup of this property. Um. Just trying to understand where the process was, we followed up with CDPHG and called uh with the call with their Division Director of the Air Quality. Um, and um they reported the following to us, that the city's environmental consultant had submitted the variance request in April of twenty twenty five. By law, CDPHG had ninety days to review that permit. Upon review, CDPHG requested some revisions. Um, the city's environmental consultant has been working with CDPHG on these revisions. Um, just today in an email with CDPHG, uh their air quality division, um they do expect that permit to be approved this week. So the next steps is are, once the variance is approved, the city um city's general abatement contractor will be required to submit a work plan for the site to CDPHG based on the conditions of the variance. The general abatement contractor must be licensed to do this kind of cleanup work, and their work plan must align closely with the work proposed in the approved variance. Once CDPHG confirms licensure and approves the work plan, demolition can begin. The the work plan approval process is expected to take ten to fourteen working days. So concerns about this property are that uh it is an asbestos spill and is dangerous to the community to begin work without completing permitting process and going through the appropriate channels to clean it up. The undisturbed dirt and ruins uh do not pose a high risk to the community, but once the pile is disturbed, it will will pose a high risk. CDPHG did recommend fencing the property to help prevent entry, and the city did put up a temporary fence around that property. The property also falls within the Superfund Boundary and likely contains both lead and arsenic that can also be dangerous to the community. Um, it is important to note that starting cleanup on this property prior to approval from CDPHG will result in up to a twenty-five thousand dollar fine. So in summary, the city has done everything it's supposed to do and is following the process. The variance for open-air demolition is expected to be approved by CDPHG this week. The city must then hire a general abatement contractor to do the work. Um, and the the general abatement contractor will submit a work plan to CDPHG, and once approved, that demolition and cleanup can begin. So with that, I want to turn it over for for a moment to Chad Walgram to just explain what our role has been in this and what our role in uh properties like this is in the future.
But thank you. Yes, so our role, so we have a contract with the State Health Department to do asbestos, respond to asbestos complaints and asbestos spills and put stop-work orders on any work that's being done without the proper permitting. Um, we do not approve any permits, any abatement permits or any other permits that all has to go through the state for approval, so. We kind of, we respond to the complaints, we write up the inspection reports, and we send it to the state for um enforcement actions and any other thing that they need to follow up with the property owners on. Uh, we can also issue stop-work orders, so if somebody's doing some work without a proper permit or licensing, um, we can put a stop-work order on it until they get the the proper testing completed and and taken care of. Um, so when we got word of this um property and the conditions, we sent kind of our staff out there to kind of take a look at it and see what was happening. Um, so Aaron Martinez went out there and kind of made the observations that Randy um stated earlier, so we did recommend that the fencing be put up. Um, and we have gotten calls from the the owner of the Clamshell, who said that the fencing has been taken down, and so we've had Aaron. He went back out there and had put it up the other day, so. Um, we're also putting up illegal dumping cameras in the alley to try and catch people that are accessing that property um and dumping more trash and litter on the site, so. Um, so far, we haven't really gotten anything solid, just individual peoples, you know, going onto the property, not no license plate or any trash or anything that we can track down to an individual. Um, so that's kind of where we're at with the property, so we're we're kind of keeping an eye on it, maintaining it, we're checking the cameras. Um, we've got an illegal dumping camera that'll light up and give a verbal warning when it's motion activated. Um, so that still seems to be working and, you know, hopefully that'll help deter people from accessing that property. But we are keeping an eye on it and you know, hopefully it it doesn't, the contamination doesn't spread or get any worse by people going in and out of that problem.
I'd like to recognize me. Um, thirteen ten East Tenth is the property address. I know we we, everybody knows where it's at, but that's the official address, and I want to thank you, Randy. Um, as a matter of fact, I had gotten contact with Randy via the suggestion from the county commissioners. We're very, you know. They they said, yeah, call it ready, but he'll get it straight now, so I really appreciate you jumping in on this. Um, as far as the Clamshell and across the street, I think the biggest concern is the elf uh the elf top, I think it's El Topo Huego, yeah. Um, their their issues are they have an outdoor restaurant, and that's kind of the thing that they're seeing when they're eating, so that was one of the issues, but I I appreciate you guys jumping on this and and working as fast as you can. Thank you. Any uh, Brett Foster.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, thank you for that report, gentlemen, and um I'm glad to hear that, you know, we're doing what we can to try to help this property. Um, I know everybody knows about it for the most part, and it's definitely a terrible thing in the community. Uh, but what you're saying is uh getting that uh approved this week is great news, and then you said it should take about three weeks or so um to get the uh contracting done for the abatement, right, to figure out.
Once the contractor submits a work plan.
Once the contractor submits a work plan, it takes ten to fourteen days to respond.
Okay, so we're looking at maybe about a month, maybe to maybe get started on the project, hopefully, at best-case scenario?
Yeah, I'd say a month.
A month to six weeks.
All right, sounds good. And then do we have any estimated timeline on how long a project like this might take to get to completion, or is that always very based on each property?
I would have to defer to the the folks who are working with the contractors on that. I don't know that answer.
Yeah, the the property will go out to bid for demo. Um, that could take twenty-one-plus days. After it goes through the process, we'll award the contract, um and then get somebody out there to clean it up. Bring it to City Council.
Council Martinez, Martinez, sorry.
Yeah, that's it.
Martinez and then Council Maestro.
So because the property is in the Superfund Site, it adds a layer of complexity because it's within the boundaries of the Superfund Site. Um, one of the things that I heard you say is that if the dirt and the earth is disturbed, because it's in the Superfund Site, there's an added layer of risk, whether that be um like lead as an example. Can you talk a little bit about the mitigation efforts for like when there is demolition um to help kind of prevent airborne stuff going around for for like the businesses, you know, directly that neighbor that property?
Sure, yeah, because of the condition of this property, they had to do the open-air variance. They couldn't go into the building and remove the asbestos and do it in a confined kind of closed setting to where none of that contamination would leave the property. Um, so to do the open-air kind of demolition process, they have to constantly wet the property, prevent any dust from leaving leaving the ground, so that would help, you know, of any lead or arsenic that's in that dust and soil from leaving the property as well. Um, so they would also have to load it into um covered lined roll-offs with plastic. And so once they get everything into the roll-offs, they have to seal it up tight before they take it off the property, so. It's very controlled. They keep it wet and moist, so there's not dust leaving the property to kind of keep those contaminations contained to the site.
Good. Council Maestro.
Um, so it being on the Superfund Site, is that block part of the um abatement for the Superfund Site? And was this property abated or it was not abated?
Um, so that block is within the Superfund Boundary, um but this property was not abated. Um, because of the situation with the homeowner, for the property owner who had passed away, so they never, the EPA never got access to the property to do any abatement.
Is is the EPA willing to um work out something since that, you know, that was, they do have funds to abate it? Is are are they willing to do something as far as a cost savings in order to get it demolished?
I think, I think once the the demolition occurs, and it depends on who the property owner ends up being, they would have to get permission to go on and do this the similar cleanup that they did on other properties. Um, you know, bring in some topsoil and cover it, so, you know, any layers of lead or other contamination um stays sealed within that, but we can talk to the EPA. We haven't had that conversation with them. I'm working on that site yet, but we can, we can talk to them.
Because it depends they, when they go into abate, they have to run a test themselves to see, because not every property is the same, correct?
Correct. Yeah, so they'll have to go in and they'll do core sampling and and test for lead and arsenic. And then if it comes above that level, depending on what depth, they would do that abatement work and uh remove the contaminated soil and then bring in the equal amount of topsoil to cover the property.
Okay, thank you.
Council Forrest.
Uh, thanks for the uh the report on that. I'm glad we're moving forward on it. I wanted to ask about the process, I guess, that um with the oversight that the Health Department has over any house in the city of Pueblo that catches fire and is considered totaled. Um, is that, is is that something that you identify? And you have a process that you need to go look at the site, take testing and stuff? Is there anything like that? Or you only get involved in something like that if somebody asks you to do it, I guess?
So we we do respond to housing complaints, you know, for for damage or other sanitation issues. So if we got a complaint about the burned-out house, then we would kind of be involved, but we don't have you know, oversight over, we don't get reports of what houses are burned or what needs to be done, so. When they go to apply for a demolition permit, we do have you know, an area in the regional building where we would sign off and approve that, but we have to wait before we get the state abatement permit and state approval, but before we can sign off on a demo um for that property.
Yeah, I guess my question was more specific. Uh, it doesn't sound like that's your responsibility to identify uh a house that has been completely destroyed by fire. Uh, and somebody has to complain or somebody has to uh you know, prompt you guys to look at, so. But just looking at it logically, uh there's lots of sites that look like this one. This one is taking a lot of special attention, and uh I guess my next question is uh that would be considered also an attractive nuisance. Uh, not only this site, but any house that were burnt to the ground uh would be considered an attractive nuisance. My question is once you identify uh or or you're prompted correctly, the people complaining or someone wanting you to intervene. It it sounds to me like it takes about as much time to uh raise that property as as though it it was just a property, a normal property that had no environmental issues. I I didn't, I I didn't catch the fact that you guys could do it quicker or faster. Uh, you still have to get a ninety-day uh variance and go through the whole process like you would for any kind of raising of a property, whether it's environmentally contaminated or not.
I think if if we have a a property owner that we can contact and work with, we can probably move that process along a little faster with notices of violation or work with them on on helping them get through the process with the states.
Hey, does that help the whole idea of a mayor, instead of, you know?
Sorry.
That's okay.
Um, so I think if we have a a property owner that we can hold responsible, I think the process does go a lot quicker. We can issue him a notice of violation, but since there's not a, the owner of record is deceased on this one. You know, you have to go through a bunch of other special prop processes to get on that property and get it abated and cleaned up.
We had the uh the issue with the Albany Hotel.
That's great.
And there you had a property that wasn't insured. Um, and so uh I think that property took, I don't, I don't know whether you guys were involved in that or all of it, that that took I think a year and a half to bring down that building just because of the cost. Uh, but in many cases, uh even if there's insurance, sometimes the abatement piece of it is very limited in coverage, so. But anyway, the, thank you for answering my questions. Thank you.
Council Martinez.
I have one more, sorry. Oh, Chad, you said um, so after all this process, who is going to be the property owner? We know.
Um, we don't know. I don't know if if the city's planning on putting a lien on the property.
Oh, really?
That's a mayor.
Yeah, so this would be public funds going in to remove um the leftover remains, uh and then the city will lien the property for the cost of the area. Um, so we know that, and a lot of the properties are just in just as bad shape as this one is.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Like to add into that and the reference that probably from what I found out, maybe I'm wrong. It's owned by William C. Martinez, and he owns other properties, and he's deceased, I believe. Now, I don't know what the process is in reference to following up now on imminent domain. I don't know how that works in reference to probate issues, who knows, but they're 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 on this now, and I wanted to know logically if it's different types of demolition, whether it's like from a fire. Do we have a list from the fire department and the dates, and then work from those older dates forward until we're getting these fired uh demolition projects out of the way? Do we have a list of that, that's what a fire created and what, so it makes sense? Randy?
We we don't have a list of that. I don't, I don't know if the city does or.
Mayor?
Yeah, we keep track of all of those properties, and I think we provided them to council before, but we could provide you with an updated list.
Okay, thank you. Council Martinez.
Sorry, I have one more. As you're answering questions, there's more questions or, you know what I mean, uh questions that come onto my mind. So uh, Mr. Evans, you said that um it's a pretty long process from here on out. Or, you know, it could be, there's not necessarily like, you know, uh a um a timeframe attributed, you know, like it has to be done by six months. How long have have we been working on this property? As the city?
We asked for this permit uh last April, so it's been a very long-going process. The property has, in fact, burned several times since then, and every time it burns, we have to submit an amendment to the application that we submitted to CDPHG um because it's taken down another level or another degree um where asbestos could potentially be released. And so the city has been working on this project since last April.
Okay. Do we have any other comments or questions? Mayor, you good? Just Council Boston.
One comment, I think that list you're referring to, I think Ms. Cook had a list when they talked about that burn-related uh boarded program that had a lot of that stuff and the different degrees, so I'm pretty sure she can get that over to us again.
Great. Okay, any other questions? Thank you, Randy. Thank you, Chad, very much. Next up on the agenda is Agenda Item C, Pike's Peak Park Update. We've got Sarah Gutierrez, excuse me, Sandy Gert, sorry, Sandy can't can't read without my glasses. Sandy Gutierrez, Chief Executive Officer, Neighborhood Works. Tamalia Plushak, I believe it is, direct, I can't read it. Oh, excuse me, Tammy, thank you. Director of Real Estate and Community Development, Neighborhood Works. And I want also to recognize Sandy for jumping in and assisting Band. Um, she was very cordial. We've got a lot of things that we're working out now between both organizations, so I want to thank you, Sandy. Thank you. Good. It's all yours.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Roger, for that. Um, that falls in line with Neighbor Works' mission, so we're happy to help Band and all the work that we can do in the Bessmer area. And then hopefully expand some of those efforts um in other parts of the community. So again, my name is Sandy Gutierrez. I am the CEO at Neighbor Works Southern Colorado. I've only been there for eleven months, so it's been a steep uh learning curve in the housing space, but I've loved every bit of it. Um, we are here tonight to provide a update on Pike's Peak Park, which is a um community development on the west side of of Pueblo. So I just want to thank uh Mayor Graham, uh President Alaf and the rest of council for inviting us to provide an update. We're eager to share all of the movement that we've got, and Tamara's going to take on most of the presentation, obviously, because she's been um deeply involved in the project, so Tamara, it's all yours.
Thank you. As you mentioned, my name is Tamara Plushak. I am the Director of Real Estate and Community Development with Neighbor Works Southern Colorado, and I've been with the organization for five years. Um, I was brought on specifically for this project um early on, um just as a coordinator, and then um as the project developed, so did my role. Um, we are also joined here this evening just to acknowledge um Andrea Delagarza, our Board Chair with Urban Riddle. So thank you again for inviting us to provide an update on Pike's Peak Park. We realize that uh it's been a few years since we've come in and provided an update um or given any type of a um response for Neighbor for Neighbor Works on Pike's Peak Park and a few of you who are new to this project. So we do want to provide just a quick update on who we are, um for those of you who may not know or be aware. Um, Neighbor Works has a mission to promote healthy, vibrant neighborhoods and serve as the first choice for homebuyer resources in Southern Colorado. We do operate on five pillars of strength. We educate, lend, build, and engage. Um, we educate with first-time homebuyer education, um foreclosure mitigation, credit counseling. We lend, uh small business lending, down payment assistance, um home improvement lending. We engage with our community through food initiatives, through advocacy work. Um, we're now launching a robust community development um program uh where it's going to be focused on revitalization and beautification, starting off in the Bessmer neighborhoods. And then also we we build. Um, we've most recently had finished the Hyde Park Gardens development on the west side of Pueblo. Um, right, right by where Travis Wart, the Propertory Academy is, and that was ninety homes built there, and then we broke ground on Pike's Peak Park um in twenty twenty-three. To give a quick overview of what Pike's Peak Park is, um it's been five years in the planning, so this is a very brief overview. I'm going to be try to be as detailed as possible without getting too much in the weeds. Um, Pike's Peak Park, we purchased the land, we started purchasing the land in twenty eighteen with full purchase uh being completed in twenty nineteen. The location is eighty acres off of Twenty-Fourth Street and Pueblo Boulevard um near where the new detention facility is being built, also where Fire Station Number Eleven um just had their ribbon cutting. Congratulations on that. That's a huge um success for the west side community, so thank you for doing that and completing that mon uh project. When we purchased this land, um being our mission of promoting homebuyer resources and having a mission of homeownership, uh we've absolutely wanted for sale homes in this uh community. We didn't just want another subdivision, we wanted a community um that provided a lot of different elements within that. Um, in addition to that, we also wanted affordable homeownership opportunities for low and middle-income families and promoting that um in in addition to having a health equity um element. Pike's Peak Park is now, you know, going from twenty eighteen and then twenty nineteen, we had spent quite a few years going through the master planning process. Currently, it is a fully master-planned community um with having six hundred and sixteen planned units in this mixed-use, mixed-income. Um, it provides amenities, outdoor space, walkability, um promoting healthy lifestyles. It does include fifteen acres of public parks and green space, um commercial units, community buildings, connections to the regional trail system um as well as affordability mechanisms to help meet that affordability rate of having at least fifty percent of the units being affordable um in this space. That includes shared equity, sweat equity, and down payment assistance programs. Um, as you can imagine, a master-cut planned community like the one you're seeing on your screen now takes a lot of time to plan. It takes a lot of resources and it takes a lot of money. Um, so this master-planned community, uh you know, with a lot of that, the upfront costs are the most expensive. This is a list of just some of the major investments that have been made into Pike's Peak Park um since the time when we started purchasing the land, um close to nine million dollars or eight point five million dollars in so far. Um, that does include over three million dollars in private foundation funding and nine hundred thousand dollars from the city through ARPA funding as well. Um, the upper, the ARPA funding was in response to a RACE grant that the city had received, um eighteen point some million um for investment onto the west side, having to do with uh main corridors and things to that sort. Um. In response to that, the um nine hundred thousand dollars that was awarded to Neighbor Works for the ARPA funding um was used for specifically um infrastructure, water, sewer, stormwater into um Sun Mountain Boulevard, which is the main north-south corridor that that bisects the development. So now where we are today, this is the actual update piece. So to give an update on on kind of how this takes, um you know, we had zoning redone. We had to develop our own zoning for this property. Um, so we developed a P U D, which was completed in March of twenty twenty-two. The plat was reported in April of twenty twenty-four. And then just recently, we had to have some adjustments on line on lot lines and things to that sort. And that was completed just recently. Sandy signed off on them in June of this year. Um. The infrastructure, Sun Mountain, Sun Mountain Boulevard and the ARPA funding, that was actually completed recently um within the last six months, um and that was actually completed with a hundred Um, and that was actually completed with $100,000 under budget. We had submitted that final reporting to the city, so we, they have, you guys have that. For Phase One, which is that green section that you see color coded there, um, that's construction Phase One. And 50% of the water sewer, um, stormwater infrastructure is complete in that phase. All that with 8.5 million dollars being completed so, or in, um, invested so far, is still $9 million of infrastructure away from just the infrastructure being completed, um, for this whole phase of, of the development. There are a number of contributing factors, um, which is to, but why we're at the stage that we're at today. Um, current political environment on the federal level has a lot to do with that. Um, funding restrictions, funders are now reallocating funding, um, from development into other areas that have been cut just to make sure that, um, other programming that is necessary for our communities to succeed, um, is still, is still continuing. Um, all of that, you know, restricts the amount of resources that we have the availability to go out to, to obtain, um, and, and complete this project on our own. So Neighbor Works is not immune to these funding restrictions and the funding concerns that are out there. Uh, we've seen a lot of nonprofits, uh, experience these types of funding issues. Um, it has come to the conclusion, at this point, we've come to the conclusion that we are not able to do this on our own. And so we have just recently, um, spoken to our board about this and had a board retreat last month, um, where we made that decision that we are going to seek out partnerships, that we are no longer going to be able to do this on our own. And we need partnerships in order to continue this, um, this going forward. And so we are continuing that process. Now, when we spoke to our board, one of the resounding, um, words that were just coming out of this is that Pueblo, Pueblo needs this. It's not that, um, it's not that we want to do it, that we want our name tied to it. We know if we can't do this on our own, we need to bring others in because Pueblo does need this. They need, uh, attainable homeownership opportunities for low and middle income families. We need safe, healthy homes that are adequate for, um, outdoor activity that have, that are walkable, um, that have walkability to where kids can go outside and play and parents can watch them and get to amenities that they need, especially on the west side where it has a significant lack of amenities in the area. Um, overall, the, uh, residents of Pueblo deserve a higher quality of life to live in the, in a, in a development like this. Um, because of the situation that we're in now to where we need partnerships, that's exactly what we're doing. We, um, are continuously meeting with our board and our committees, um, outlining the roles that we are going to play, the commitments that we need met and the needs that we have as an organization to move forward and the partnerships that we need to obtain in order to make this, uh, this project work. Um, over the next six months, we will progress through a series, um, of steps, identifying quality partners, um, present material, go through a discovery period with those potential partnerships that lead to potentially partnership agreements to where we can continue this, this project. Um, we have, um, identified this strict timeline for us to make sure that we stay online and bring this, um, to the community as quickly as possible. Um, but rest assured that, you know, Pike's Peak Park is a Neighbor Works, um, community. It is a Neighbor Works project and we will be the ones to identify those partnerships that meet the needs of the organization, meet the affordability needs, um, for us to move forward. Anything to add, Sam?
Anything else? You good?
Good.
Yeah, I just want to applaud, first of all, who's, who's responsible for the savings of $100,000? Who was that again? In, in your project, when you-
The savings of the $100,000?
Yes.
That has a lot to do with our general contractor and the contracts that we've signed with them and the timing of that-
Wow, because we don't hear that a lot. Mayor Graham?
I just had a, a question on that ARPA funding. I know that we gave you $900,000 and as of today, um, 175,000 had not been reported. And then when we had asked about it, so that the project wasn't going to be completed. Um, so if those funds aren't being spent for the project, they have to be returned to the city.
Yes, and I'm not sure where you heard that the project was not going to be completed. However, the product is moving forward, just slower than what we anticipated due to the funding constraints that we've had. We are moving forward that. We have submitted all of the reimbursement information towards that.
I think the last one we received was in June. I don't mean your project in general. I just mean the, the wastewater portion of the 900,000.
Yes, the last submission was, um, last, within the last two weeks.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the 100,000 will then be returned back to the city?
Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't actually provided to us as funding. It was a reimbursable.
Great.
So the city still has that.
Thanks.
Okay, any other comments? Council Flowers, please.
Yes, I was looking at that green area and I'm assuming that the, uh, the nine million of infrastructure, um, up to a certain level of infrastructure, uh, is, is represented in that green. Is that correct?
Yes.
Or does the infrastructure for sewer lines and water lines go beyond the green section?
The remaining 9 million, I'm sorry, I just want to clarify, the remaining $9 million that's needed, you're asking?
No, no, I'm not, I'm not, I was going to get to that.
Okay. The funds that have already been invested into the project, um, contribute to the entire project as a whole. So this is 80 acres, um, and consists of 616 units. The green, I'll just go back to Applefast. The green area that you're seeing there is construction Phase One. So the development is broken out into, um, three separate development phases. The purple, orange, blue and green that you're seeing here is all considered, uh, development Phase One. The green portion is construction Phase One. So the, um, 8.5 million that's been invested so far is to the entire project. Um, upfront costs are a lot more when you're developing new land.
So now you're looking for 9 million to complete, uh, the infrastructure. I'm, I'm assuming we're talking curb and gutter and roads and that type of thing. Is it possible that, uh, or have you identified, say, half of that amount of which you could, you could begin the process? Or are you going to have to wait to proceed until you raise all the $9 million? I'm thinking if you raise half of that, that you could, you could start, you know, a block or something and, and have those houses built.
Yeah, when you're in, when you're, I, I understand where you're, where you're asking, um, from that. And that's why there's different colors there. So we have green, orange, blue and purple. So the different, uh, construction phases. So it is meant to be done in phases to where we can start like the green section first. Um, but, um, it still requires infrastructure to be put in. We can't get a CO until streets are paved. You can't pave streets until infrastructure is put in. And so that's all part of that. That's why, um, when you're starting to, when you're starting the development, construction, uh, the upfront costs are what's most expensive.
So you're going to need to collect the whole 9 million to, uh-
At least have it secured. And that's kind of where our partners are going to be coming in. We have a list of partners identified that we'll be working towards.
Have you gotten a lot of, uh, interest from developers, uh, to, to, to work on this?
So far, we've had, uh, a few interested already and we have identified others, yes.
That's great. That's a great process you're following. So thank you.
Okay, Councilor Martinez, please.
Um, because we need housing at all levels and, you know, I feel like when we first heard about this, it's filling a crucial housing need. Um, and, you know, I think Tamara, you hit the nail on the head when you say like, we, Pueblo needs this. Is, is the city on the list of the potential partners that you're going to be reaching out to?
Yes, we've absolutely thought of, sorry, yes, we've absolutely thought of the city as partnerships, especially with, um, you know, the, the conversations that we've had with, uh, Ms. Cook, um, and with the Department of, of, of Housing and so forth. So the discussions that we've had with them, the meetings that, um, are now being presented and the amount of work that is already, the amount of progress, I should say, that's already happening on a city level.
Okay, great. I'm, I'm glad to hear that just because I think we should be working together to, you know, get this done because we share the common goal of getting people into houses. Thanks.
Council Mike Street, please.
The one thing I would add to that, um, I'm sorry, Council Martinez, is the emphasis, the emphasis that we have in this project to improve the quality of life for the residents, um, is such a great selling point and quite frankly, such a great opportunity where we're hoping that will be attractive to, um, additional partners. But this isn't, again, as Tamara mentioned, just a development. This is really a, a community.
Okay. Tamara, did you have anything? You have your light on. Okay, Council Mar, oh, Mike Street, please.
Um, so when the project was started, you didn't secure funding for the different phases as they came up? I mean, you didn't have this next phase, you didn't have it secured previously?
I want to say yes and no. So yes, there were part, uh, portions of the development that were secured and others that were anticipated that did not come through. That the 8.5 million that you saw there was what was, um, secured and did come through. The remaining portions of that did not.
Mm-hmm. And, um, what other projects do you have going on? Do you, I know you have other several lots around the west side, don't you? Are you doing any single one-offs on housing?
We don't have any other lots.
Oh, you don't have any more lots out there? Just, just the development portion?
Correct.
Okay.
Good. President Markov, Eli, please.
Thank you. Thank you for, excuse me, thank you for that update. I mean, this was, uh, I was on council along with Council Flowers when this first came about. And we saw, we've seen several presentations, uh, on how this was all going to come about. You know, quite frankly, for me personally, I think this was a missed opportunity for the city of Pueblo. You know, we begged, and I'd say we, at least I begged, uh, in 2019 or 20, when we had all the ARPA money. This is exactly what we should be using ARPA money for at the time. Now imagine if we would have invested in that infrastructure then and you would have built the dollars that's, that the city of Pueblo would be gaining now in perpetuity. So my argument always used to be, okay, it costs you $9 million or $8 million to put in the infrastructure. But what the city gets back from that investment is millions and millions of dollars, you know? Uh, I think it's a, a 600-unit, uh, subdivision would easily, easily be a two and a half to $4 million, uh, uh, property tax, not to mention when you get density and you create businesses and so on and so forth. It's just, it's just unfathomable that, as a city, we didn't take this more seriously, uh, back when we had the opportunity and the money. And the money to, to invest and get that infrastructure put in and get, and get this built. It's critical. It's critical. And, and as Council Martinez said, I hope the city is, uh, still on the list because you do have people, uh, that, that work up here that, that were truly invested in this at the very beginning stages and want to see it come to fruition because it's so important to not only the west side, but to the city of Pueblo. And it's something that literally has to be done. But we have to be able to look, uh, beyond this initial investment because this initial investment comes back forever, forever. And as a community, we just, we just prosper and prosper. Uh, so, you know, I hope you guys come to, come, come back with plan and I hope there's something we can do to help, uh, because I'm very much a supporter of getting this done. So, but thank you. Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
You have something? Council Mike Street, please.
Um, just one more thing. So you did sell a home there because that was in the, in the paper that you had sold a home. What happens in that case?
Yes, so we, that was in our Hyde Park Gardens development. We had, um, reserved a few of the homes that were built, the last homes that were built in the Hyde Park Gardens development, specifically to test our, um, shared equity and sweat equity programs, um, which went through terrific, by the way. So thank you for asking about-
So is it built then? Because that was over a year ago, it seems like.
Yeah, no, those, those homes there were completed. Those were Hyde Park Gardens. Um, so in Hyde Park Gardens, that development was completed at the end of 2023. And then we had, um, sold the last few homes. We had saved them and sold the last few homes at the beginning of 2024.
And is, say you get your development done, will the shared equity programs be available at that time? Or what, are they always available? I mean, is there funding for that or?
Yes, we actually developed our own, um, deed restricted shared equity program. So yes, the program is available, um, as to if there is funding available, not currently. That is also part of the partnerships that we are looking towards. Shared equity comes in many different forms. It's been around for quite some time. Um, typically in the form of community land trusts, um, is what we see a lot of. But the, um, portion that we are working on is specifically deed restricted and that can get into the weeds a little bit. So I'll leave it at that.
What were the, what was the anticipated cost of your homes?
Um, well, they've obviously increased since the last time that we were looking at the actual building portion of the homes. So the cost to build now with different, um, contributing factors, um, will be much higher now. Now, as far as affordability goes, I'm, because I'm thinking that the definition of affordability is what comes to mind of what everybody typically tries to ask is what is affordable? And what's affordable to one person is going to differ to what's affordable to another. Um, it's really dependent upon that family, that family's size, that family's income. Um, what shared equity is meant to do is to help fill that gap. So if somebody is, say a home is 300,000, but they can afford a mortgage at 200,000, that 100,000 could be made up through shared equity. Maybe they only need 50,000 in shared equity in order to meet that gap and make that home affordable to them. But it's all dependent upon the family.
But there's still a, a, a sales price on every home. You're talking, I'm asking you, if you were to sell the house outright after you've completed construction, what would you be selling that for?
I'm, I'm not gonna, I don't, not gonna be able to provide an answer to you right now. I can say average sales price in, in Pueblo right now is probably about 323,000, 325,000.
Okay.
Good. Council Flowers, please.
No, I just, uh, really see a great opportunity here too. And I concur with, uh, President Alif's comments about the need that we have and, uh, potentially we should have been maybe, uh, more involved in that in the beginning. But I see, uh, so many selling points here with the development, well, with the, the fire station, with the new Medal of Honor Boulevard, with the connection to Pueblo West to Pueblo, with all the commercial property that's being built. Uh, it just seems like, uh, uh, you have a great opportunity with developers. I mean, you, this is the spot to be at right now, uh, just because it's such an attractive place now with, uh, many amenities and, uh, it, uh, you know, I, I really encourage you when you're selling or trying to, uh, and, and maybe, uh, you have developers that are knocking down your door too. I don't know what the circumstances are, but you certainly have a lot of selling points here that someone like myself could see as a great potential. And, uh, you know, hopefully you could sell $9 million worth of, of property and there's your extra infrastructure money to, to complete your, your own project. So anyway, just want to encourage you and you have my support. Thank you.
Council Latino?
Yes, thank you for your presentation. Um, what, what are your plans for District Two or the east side? What do you have in mind for that, that particular district?
So thank you for that question and it's a great question, uh, Council Latino. We, as Tamara mentioned, uh, launched a community development, uh, initiative with Neighbor Works. It's very much in its infancy. Uh, we see a great opportunity right now is, as Roger or Councilman Gomez mentioned, where we're going to be partnering with band. So we would like to see those partnering opportunities where we can come in and use the resources that we have available, um, you know, through our nonprofit to get grants and do different things. As far as developing or building at this point, we don't have any plans on the east side. Um, as you could imagine, this is all consuming and it's a very, very big project with lots of moving parts. Um, but we absolutely want to work with our community to really revitalize our communities.
Let me ask you what, have you, have you had any contact with Cheryl Anderson from the I Will Project?
No. Cheryl Anderson?
Yes.
Can you provide a warm hand up?
I Will Project. Uh, that's the organization that's working with, uh, Urban Renewal, who was working with, uh, one of the great people- Who was working with uh one of the great people in our community, Jerry Pacheco. Uh, who I'm sad to see left that position, breaks my heart. And uh, uh, we we got a grocery store with uh others and other amenities coming up there. And she's been working hard, just like Cheryl has, and she was working with Jer- Jerry and his staff at the time. Um, so, you know, we 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 need to have the, all the help we can possibly get, cause it's a great area with great people.
Absolutely.
So uh, I'm hoping that we can connect and 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 maybe sit down and talk.
Right.
Bring both parties together.
So I'm just gonna give you a quick example of something, you know, again, that we can leverage resources with Neighbor Works is we just applied for a fifty thousand dollar grant um to do community development. And one of the things we wanna do is work with BAND to uh do some facade improvements investors. So we see a lot of boarded up um businesses. Um, so for example, we can go in and we can help um improve those sites, if you will, that are sort of the eye. Um, we may not have businesses operated behind that door, but we can certainly uh make it appear as though there's robust economic opportunities happening, which we hope to eventually get to that.
Right. And Andrea Delagars is here today too, so maybe you can visit with her and.
She's our board chair. We're grateful to have her.
Yeah, you get together.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks. Uh, any other questions? And Mary, you're good. Everybody's good. All right, I think.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Sandy. Thank you very much. Next up, Item Agenda D is the Roofing RFP Review. Andrew Hayes, Public Works Director. We have Charles Chuck Roy, Acting Director of Public Works, and Naomi Headen, Director of Purchasing. Fifteen minute presentation. Did you do that right? These guys aren't missing around. You tend to need a library card. Thank you. Hey, thanks for following up with those constituents, by the way. Okay, okay. You're good. Oh, my goodness.
Council, thank you for your patience while we got that uh sorted out there. Uh, obviously, our our work session topic here tonight is uh in a response to questions that had been brought forward with respect to the award of two different roofing contracts. Uh, so those are obviously tabled or postponed until uh the meeting tonight. So we'll be considering those. One is a resolution for awarding uh contract for uh various roofs at the wastewater treatment plant facility. The second is a an ordinance that will uh award a contract and uh provide funds for the ICE Arena Roof. Um, so we'll talk in a little bit more detail about the specific projects in a moment, and you'll hear more details about them again in the staff reports during councils during the during the regular meeting. Uh, but I wanted to, I guess, clarify some of the unique aspects of the way that the city buys uh buys things, first off, specifically buys public improvements. And even within that category, there's uh some unique aspects of how the city acquires roofs and roofing systems. So we're gonna talk a little bit more about that. Uh, next slide, please. Oh, I guess we got it. So, again, talking about how the city buys things, there's uh information in the charter about regulations and requirements for how we procure uh goods and services for the city. Uh, in particular, again, for city improvements, where we're talking about public improvements, that's construction, that's facilities, that's infrastructure. Those kinds of uh services are are bought under a specific subset of purchasing regulations, but it is uh, these are the regulations that deal with that in the charter, in our municipal code and ordinances, and in our purchasing policies and procedures, which are adopted by ordinance by council. In general, uh, for most public improvements here, Public Works is generally the one dr- uh driving the requirements, developing the requirements. So we're putting together biddable packages for uh drawings and specifications, preparing the initial um, uh, I guess, request for those services and uh outlining what the requirement is so that uh vendors can offer uh bids or proposals, depending on the type of solicitation going out. Uh, purchasing, Naomi, uh and her team advertise those uh in this case for roofing projects mostly. They're done by invitations for bid or IFBs. That's different than an RFP or Request for Proposal. IFBs generally are more structured. They're for specific requirements that are pretty well defined generally. We get hard bids or unit prices usually in those kinds of uh solicitation structures. And then we also have requests for proposal that sometimes are much more flexible. Um, some kinds of projects may not have a fixed requirement. They might have more flexibility in how a contractor approaches the problem or approaches the solution, and so they can bring uh a proposal forward. And so you might have a best value kind of solicitation where that kind of a structure is there. In the case of our roofing projects, particularly the ones that we're talking about tonight, these were both done by invitation for bid. So once that IFB goes out, it's advertised for a period of time, typically minimum of twenty one days, I believe. Uh, twenty one to thirty days is our normals, kind of standard range through which it's advertised. Um, bidders attend during that time, a prebid meeting. And so the subject of the prebid meeting came up uh in our in our last discussion, so I wanna make sure we highlight that prebid meeting is an important piece of clarify, it gives uh vendors an opportunity to ask questions, to clarify the requirement. Um, to understand what the city's intent is and to identify if there's been any miscommunication. That gives the city and vendors an opportunity both to ask questions or to, for the city to clarify uh requirements through an amendment to that RFP or IFB. Um, so that prebid meeting happens, uh again, vendors have a opportunity to submit questions. Uh, or in the case of our roofing projects, to submit alternatives. So in our RFPs, we're gonna look through in just a minute here, there are some instructions in there about how they can offer alternatives to the specifications that we've provided. Um, finally, uh, there's an award deadline or excuse me, a bid deadline, and those uh offers, vendors, contractors submit their bids or proposals by that deadline. Uh, once those are in, purchasing typically does a review for what we call responsiveness and responsibility. So responsiveness to the bid, meaning does the bid or the proposal answer? Does it respond to the requirements the city's put forth? The responsibility piece uh alludes to can this contractor reasonably perform the work? Are they qualified to do so? Do they uh, do they have any
Financial.
financial issues or character concerns, or have they been disbarred? Have there, are there other reasons why the city should not be awarding a contract? And can they, can they perform the work? And so we award contracts to responsive and responsible bidders. Um, again, once that uh, once that review is done, if it's an IFB, it's typically a price based evaluation. And so there's just an a a sum, which is the last piece of paper I'd handed out there that kind of shows the tabulation of bids. Sometimes there are multiple um alternatives that are included. So you'll see a base bid and some alternatives on some of those projects. So you'll sum up or add up what the total bids are for the ones that are going to be awarded based on our budget available. And ultimately, purchasing will make the award of that contract uh post us coming to council for a resolution to do so. Uh, once the contract is awarded, then Public Works, within the bounds of the authority given to uh the city in the uh resolution awarding the contract, uh will administer the construction and and oversee the the work being done. That's the typical basic process for most public improvements, including these roof projects. So, special considerations within roofs. Roofs are unique in that uh material suppliers uh have to offer typically very long warranties, much longer than we get for roads or concrete or parks or other types of facilities. Uh, we are asking for twenty year warranties on a roof or a thirty year warranty in some cases for certain types of roof materials. Uh, so those vendors have a lot more risk over those durations in order to uh warrant their product. Uh, the contractors that install that vendors' materials are certified by that vendor. That is a common practice across the roofing industry. So whether you were talking about a Carlisle brand or a GAF brand or a Garland brand or any other, those vendors have their contractors uh be certified to install their product. Uh, mentioned here that there are obviously different types of roofs that we buy. We've, we buy metal roofs, standing thin metal roofs. Uh, we buy membrane roofs that are very similar to the ones that we are talking about tonight. Uh, there's also the wastewater projects or asphalt uh asphalt shingle roofs, I'm sorry, asphalt roof systems. Uh, there are other solicitations out right now that uh that, excuse me, I think they've been come, they've come back, but the, there are also uh IFBs that have gone out for asphalt shingle roofs as well. So we, we buy all these different types. Some manufacturers make the entire spectrum of products across all those lines of roofing materials. Some specialize in one area or another. The bottom line is that there are standard ASTM, American Society of Testing uh materials that uh creates standardized laboratory tests to determine and help compare the durability of various materials from various manufacturers. They have to meet certain specifications in order to be uh able to be to to meet our performance specs. So uh typically, what will happen is we are writing these specifications to meet certain ASTM specs. We'll, we'll show you in just a minute here in our RFP where we refer to those specific standards and tests. Um, there was a question also last week raised about contractor participation, specifically um, you know, why are there no local contractors? That's not the case. Uh, there are contractors that participate from outside of Col- uh outside of Pueblo. And uh also those within Pueblo as well. We have awarded contracts, both local, to local firms and to uh firms from out of town. Uh, in the case of the two projects tonight that you're gonna see, there are uh five or six to meet on the project vendors who have responded with bids for those projects. One of those was a local contractor in this case. Um, the others were all either from Colorado Springs or Denver or other areas. Um, the question was also raised about local preference. We don't do local preference for a couple of reasons. One is um, there is a practice that cities could decide to not award their contracts to Pueblo contractors if we start um, uh, kind of giving preference. It also doesn't make sense for us to award to a local contractor if a price is higher. So if a local contractor wants to bid, they're welcome to bid, they're welcome to participate, but we are seeking best value or lowest price with the uh that meets our requirements. And so in those, in those cases, we wanna see uh the maximum competition. That is what is best for the city, that is what's best for the public and the most efficient use of the dollars that were uh being provided. Um, I think I answered that one. There were this kind of two aspects. Go ahead.
On the local preference, we're not allowed to do that because of a law of reciprocity that is just pretty standard in procurement. So if any of the contractors here locally, if we had a local preference, Colorado Springs would not have, they don't have to take the bids of people in Pueblo or Salida or Denver. As long as we have that, we're kind of putting a border around our people here saying we can't allow them to to bid somewhere else. They wouldn't take them. So that's the reason that we've never had that. And there's only one or two mountain towns that have the local preference, and none of the other cities in Pueblo and Colorado do.
All right. So what I'd like to do is, well, uh, we can start with either one, but why don't we start with the um start with the ICE Arena contract. So that one is the twenty five zero one nine uh Pueblo Ice Arena Roof Retro Fit Project. I've got about four tabs in there, and I just wanna highlight kind of some key parts of this is a standard RFP. It is obviously specific to this project, so it does have the specific requirements for the drawings and specifications for this project, and it does also have general terms and conditions that apply generally across all of our contracts as well. So wanna highlight, and each of you have tabs in there. The first tab in that uh it points at paragraph three point seven, which talks about approved equals. And so for the public, if they're watching uh and and can't flip through this with us, there's a screenshot of typical language here. Uh, this particular one on the screen came, came from the other contract from the ICE Arena, uh, the wastewater, excuse me, project. Uh, so it's number three point six, but it's a very similar language. So in that specification, we very clearly state multiple times, but here once, an approved equal where noted may be considered by the city. So in order for contractors to submit alternatives, there are instructions here. There's a form that we provide them to be able to submit that. And as part of the solicitation process, as part of that prebid meeting time, we give everyone an opportunity to ask questions to suggest these things, and we give them the instructions on how to respond to us if they don't wanna provide a Garland spec material. Okay? The next tab in there is from uh five point three six, which reads Plans and Specifications or Equal Clause.
Is that the blue, is that the blue tag?
Uh, their colors, colors vary in everybody's, but it's the second tab in in that same packet.
Okay. Just curious.
And the, essentially what that's reminding everybody is if we left something out, if we specified something and we forgot to say or equal elsewhere in the contract, it is implied throughout that contract. It is implied throughout that solicitation. The point is, we are not, we don't have a preference for a particular brand of material. We have a preference for durability, performance and specifications of the material. We wanna make sure roofs are gonna last uh as long as they should. So in this particular case, it is uh very clearly trying to state that we have no preference. It is uh, this shall not be construed in such a manner as to exclude manufactured projects of comparable quality, design and efficiency.
Okay.
So in the third tab back there, we start getting into construction specifications. So for uh folks that may not be familiar with the way that construction specs are written, they come in three parts. Uh, the second part deals with the product and material specifications specifically. So what you're looking at is part two products. This is about the materials. And there are a number of these kinds of specs for each different type of material or usage that come in. So this is just one section. But what it is trying to say here is that where there is a product that is specified, particularly if it's a Garland brand product, it is setting it up as this is the basis of design. The performance specifications of this material are the basis of design. They are not designed to um, say you have to be uh to buy the Garland product or that you have to buy anyone's Corning product if we go in that direction, or a GAF project, uh product or anything else. It is trying to say very clearly that this basis of design is uh the minimum set of performance standards you have to have in order to suggest an alternative material. And then in paragraph C sub, two point one C just below, is the directions on uh how to uh submit for substitutions for material. So that is also repeated again in the very next tab, again, where we have multiple sections of of uh specifications. Every part two will have, uh, every part two that has a material specified that might be brand name would have this very specific um, exception carved out there for, give us an alternative if you'd like. Okay? I'll set the ICE Arena one aside. The placement of uh various roofs at wastewater reclamation facility is also very similar. So similar four tabs uh uh tabbed up there as well, again, talking about the or equal clause, talking about the approved equal. Uh, and then uh how this is delineated very clearly in the construction specifications. Okay? Um, I had told you that I would get you these RFPs. I I want you to see these because this is a typical, very common way that our construction contracts go out. So this is the solicitation for, this isn't the actual contract of war, but this is what a uh a bidder would receive and review. I I should clarify, there's one piece that's on the back here or some pages in the back. Also included the pre um, prebid meeting uh agendas or um attendee lists there, so you can see for these two projects also the level of participation we had in each of those projects. So what I really wanna highlight here is that Pueblo's not an outlier. We aren't doing things that aren't consistent with our regulations internally. We are also not doing things that are not consistent with uh best practice or practice across the state and uh across the country. A very short search of uh local municipalities that that also put these kinds of specifications in their packages include Colorado Springs, Greeley, Loudoun and Longmont. There are also uh several from Florida here that we also quickly tracked down just in a very short fifteen minute uh kind of search of how does everybody else buy this? Are we? Are we, are we off our rocker? We are not. These guys also do the very same thing. They establish a basis of design and offer the vendors opportunities to submit alternatives. Okay? I think we hit all the high points, but I know there were questions. So happy to conclude the presentation at this time and take any questions you might have.
Counselor Flores, please. You know, I wanted to start with, you know, the prefer, local preference. I don't think that was ever brought up in our, in our meeting when we had some questions about these specific two resolutions that we were going to approve. So I think, I think our construction environment in Pueblo, they're well aware that if we had that kind of arrangement, it would really hurt them badly. Because we would, we would get tagged as being a monopoly down here and they would suffer by not getting work in the outlying areas. So I, I don't, I don't think that that is an issue, that was not an issue brought up by us. What I was most concerned about was how much this roofing company that we're, you've said Garland probably seven times in your presentation. And I'm wondering why Garland is brought up so much when the bidding should just be the, the, the consistency and the quality of the material along with the warranty, that that could be many companies out there. And I'm curious, I'm going to stop there because I've got about seven questions. But specifically, why, why is Garland mentioned so much in your presentation? And also became kind of a inferred preference by the city? I, I guess I need a clarification on that.
I can help you with that.
Sure.
You, you mentioned a few things there that when we are out there looking for a vendor to provide both material installation that we're looking for warranty and material, I would also argue we're working for workmanship. And so we have prior history with contractors who have not performed well. And so there are opportunities there for us to ensure that we are not repeating mistakes of the past when needed. The Garland piece, again, we're using their product as kind of that baseline specification. And so there are very similar materials that other manufacturers make. I named a few, right? So GAF, Owen's Corning, Carlisle, Garland. All of them make and manufacture these roof products and, and a range of different products, a range of different grades of the same product sometimes. And so we need to specify what kind of grade or type of material we want to have in there. So those vendors again also require their contractors, their vendors, their installers to be certified as well to kind of as a check to make sure that there are, they are financially responsible to be able to order those materials, they'll get paid, that they're qualified to install the materials and represent that brand well when, you know, the Carlisle roof gets put on the, the city building. The city's not mad at Carlisle because the workmanship was bad. So they're also trying to do that as a way to check the qualifications and experience of a, of a roof installer as well. I think I answered your question.
Somewhat, you know, it, my next question has to, do you see an advantage to a roofing company that is certified with Garland? And having to use Garland material, obviously you're saying they can use other material. But I, I, and by the way, I've had several roofing companies call me. I mean, this, this did not come, I had not thought about this. But I think in many cases they had a point. And one of them was that many, many roofers in Pueblo are not certified with Garland. So even if they had a bid, even if they had a, the low bid, they, they figure, I mean, can they go out and get this certification after the fact? And is that allowed in, in the specs here? And how, and if they are allowed to go get certified, how much time would they have to do that?
So for instance here, we had, we had brought up the pre-bid meeting, or somebody had brought up a pre-bid meeting and something that was overheard there about Garland saying something to the effect of this is a Garland project. Nobody else can bid on this, right? That was not what was said. What was said was that if there are companies here, the installers who are not certified with Garland that want to be, they can reach out and receive the forms. There's about a three or four page application that a, that a vendor has to fill in. It's pretty typical stuff, relative, excuse me, relevant projects that are recent. Who's, who are the key installers and their, their specific work experience? Financials for the company, again, their ability to respond and be responsive to customers and not make the roofing vendors look bad either, right? So that's kind of the purpose of that whole certification process. But Garland in particular, the, there was a rational decision on why to kind of look at Garland. Garland came to us and said, hey, we, we offer roofing materials just like any of these other manufacturers as well. We also offer a turnkey service where we can help with inspections during construction. And we can also help you by preparing some of the design work so that you don't have to pay for that outside. Not that they're driving the requirement. We're still reviewing and making sure that that product is what we want to buy. We would do the same thing with a third-party roof install. We'd be still reviewing their design to make sure it's what we want to buy. So when those drawings and specifications are prepared and brought forward, there is a mention of a Garland product as a baseline only, not as a, you know, we've got a preference for Garland.
It's, it, the thing that I take from this is it's really not an equal playing field here for other roofing companies.
I disagree.
If in fact, yep, but I've got other questions that I want to tag on to this. But it appears to me that Garland is, has a distinct advantage because now they're giving you these extra plums that no one even knows about, or doesn't even know that that's what you want. It just doesn't look like a, on the surface, it doesn't look like an equal playing field. But let's, let's go to, tell me what happens in the pre-bid. There's usually a meeting, it's, that's where you pass out the specs.
Right.
And you answer the contractor's questions. Who normally is in charge of that meeting?
So either construction manager, engineering manager, deputy director, public works, public works director, somebody is in that meeting, typically running that meeting. It is a city meeting, it is not a vendor meeting. The vendors and suppliers and installers all come to those meetings typically. It's why there's such high kind of attendance at those, because you've got multiple parties kind of coming in to attend and ask questions and get clarifications about the requirements. But that is very much a city meeting. It is not something that is run by or set up by a vendor. In the case of Garland, when we also follow that up with a walk on the roof, if there's a Garland product that they're, they're touting, right? Then the, you know, they can, they can talk about how their product meets that need. But a vendor and installer can certainly come in if they have a preference for GAF or Carlisle or any other brand, suggest that other material that might be equivalent.
One of, one of, one of the contractors indicated to me that the Garland representative did the walkthrough. And was that not, isn't that, isn't that the case here? That, that Garland's representative was on the roof with contractors indicating, you know, the, the scope of the work and all of that. Is that true?
I don't know if that was during a pre-bid, but it wouldn't have been alone. There would have been a city representative up there as well. So if they attended, they participated on the walkthrough and went up on the roof, then the city representative would have been there as well. There are times where Garland for contracts that have been awarded, or a contract that has been awarded, where they have been on the roof with the, the roofing installer. But that, there have been several of those meetings, but those were separate meetings, not into solicitations.
But do you see the advantage that Garland has? If in fact he was on the roof, he's going over the specifications, he's providing the information to all these contractors. And by the way, this guy, the, the representative for Garland is, is getting one thing that we've left out. He's getting a commission for paying, for selling Garland material to the city. It seems to me that we should not have anyone that has a conflict on the roof describing this and that and whatever. It seems to me that we need a, a playing field here and it just seems like there is a huge conflict here for a Garland rep to be doing a walkthrough on any, and I'm not just picking on Garland, any material supplier. They obviously want to sell you their product because they're getting a commission. And it seems to me that in that particular case, there was no one watching out for the interest of the city. If you've got a Garland representative kind of walking through contractors, who was the independent engineer that was making sure that we were not being overcharged or that, or, or looking at the entire scope of work here on an even basis, even keel, assuming that there's other manufacturers that have the same quality of material?
So that, the, the question about is the city being overcharged comes through in the bids. Again, if a manufacturer or a vendor wants to come in and offer an alternative, they're welcome to. I see you shaking your head, no, Counselor Maitre, but that's just not the way this business works. But let, I'll finish, I'll finish, I'll finish.
I understand.
So the point being here, that when a contractor comes in and they want to bid, they have the same ability as anybody else to offer an alternative. The same types of materials from, if we're talking about an EPDM or a TPO liner up on a roof, many manufacturers make those products. There, the, the pricing, the city gets protected in increasing competition and allowing these alternatives. That's where the protection to the city comes in. If we had five vendors come back and all of them didn't want to do the project, all bid super high, what do we do? Do we just say, no, we're not going to bid? We're not going to accept any bids because we don't like your pricing? But we've, we've received pricing through a competitive process.
So, so why aren't we allowing other representatives?
Right, I'm sorry, I forgot to clarify your other point. So you had mentioned that Garland being on the roof, right? And if they are truly up there, the only ones allowed, that would be a problem. But every vendor is, and every vendor offers incentives and commissions to their supplier, to their installers. That's the way the roofing business works. And that's partly why this is so troubling, because the roofing industry in particular has this structural setup where vendors are certified and put into categories where they are preferred vendors or, or not. And those preferences translate back into the way we can buy, buy these services.
Visually, this is what this looks like to me, okay? I understand that if you had four bidders and they all had different manufacturing companies but met all of the specs, they should have also had the same, they should have had the, the same representative go up there and, and walk through the, the deal. I'm not, I'm, it doesn't sound to me like that opportunity existed with other materials. It sounded to me like when you have a walkthrough, it's a one-time deal and the only guy that was up there was the Garland rep. Am I wrong about that?
Yes, the pre-bid meetings are advertised publicly. They're, they're part of the RFP and you'll see them in here too. There's a pre-bid meeting, notice, date, location, time. And vendors, suppliers, installers all can come, they can bring each other, they can let each other know that there's a project at the city and hey, come on down, let's go take a look at this thing and see what we want to, see if we have something we want to bid on. But those, those vendors, whether again, if it was Owen's Corning up there, we'd be having the same conversation.
Yeah, those are all, I see those as independent meetings. What I'm talking about is the specific walkthrough.
That was part of this pre-bid meeting.
Where Garland was actually, it, it, the vision to me is that Garland was representing the city there and not representing just his product, his Garland product. He was there telling, he, he was talking, as I understand, like, like he was an employee of the city of Pueblo. And he was indicating what he's wanting to do, what, what his product, you know, what kind of quality his product has.
Right.
And, and I don't even know whether he brought, I don't even know if he brought up the fact that other, there's other manufacturers that, that they could utilize.
And that was in the RFP.
But he shouldn't have, what I'm saying, he shouldn't have been up there to begin with, in my opinion. Okay, I, I want an engineer representing the city of Pueblo, making sure that the, the field is level. You know, I, I, I just, I just have a problem with, with this whole thing. And I want to stop there, I may have some other questions, but-
Again, real quick to your point too. So this, using Garland in particular as kind of the baseline is relatively new, within the last year or two. We did previously have a third-party consultant who we had to pay separately a fair amount of money to go and design those biddable packages for us, go and help us out with construction inspections. Those are services now that are included in the pricing that we receive from this particular vendor. And there are opportunities there for other vendors to offer the same services. So there's nothing out there necessarily about Garland that is preferable in terms of material specs, but they are offering a turnkey service that includes things that we used to have to pay for and are now able to do this without that.
How do the, how do the other vendors and material suppliers know that you're looking for them to provide more services out there? How do they know that?
This, the, the contract's asking for that. It's talking about being on the roof three times a week, right? And if there are, you know, concerns about the ability to provide that, nobody brought us an alternative. Nobody brought us any kind of different structure or, or inspection mechanism to do that. If somebody walked in the door and said, hey, I have a disagreement with this and I want to bring in a third-party consultant to do my third-party inspections, then they could have suggested that to us and we would have had to review these specs, but nobody has. And, and the only time it's come up is here when we're sitting in front of you to, to ask for the award of the contract.
Can I answer part of that?
Sure.
So when we get, if we get an alternate product, we have to put out an addendum and we have to put out another walkthrough to let everybody know that they are allowed to use this other product. So we would be giving, we would just extend the time and they would be given an opportunity to review this other product, not just Garland. But we don't have people submitting requests for other products. We had two, two projects recently that had no requirement for any specific product. And we had one bidder on both of those projects and they were not Pueblo.
So you're saying the city of Pueblo, Colorado only uses Garland products now? Is that what you're saying?
Not unless somebody else comes and submits something. There, every roofer is allowed to say at this pre-bid or on a certain day, we give them a certain day that they have to have all this information to us, that they can say, okay, we don't want to provide Garland. Here's all the information that is on this form. And then we do an addendum and we let everybody know that this vendor has provided another product. And then we will do another pre-bid.
So every contractor that does not have a relationship with Gardner has, according to the specs, they have another step they have to follow. A contractor that is Garland certified and uses Garland, they don't have to go that extra step.
They don't have to go that way.
Because they're already, they're already approved by the city of Pueblo. So if another roofer wants an alternate.
They can bring it.
They can bring it, but, but they do not, the, the, the certified Garland contractors, do you see how you've eliminated a step for them? And not for any other roofer that's bidding?
We have to pick somebody. And so- Sorry about that. So we have to pick somebody and we have a performance spec that comes out of the materials being selected there. Yes, I mean, we say we want a Garland, whatever liner or a Garland bitumen layer or whatever the, whatever the particular product is. But there are market equals made by these other vendors that they can quickly and easily provide on, or, or they can choose also to get sort of-
Hey, this is, this is another, of all the contractors that are bidding this, these ones that want to use something different, they have to go an extra step here. And I think that's, that doesn't make the playing field.
Or they can also get certified with Garland, right? So they, they still have that ability to. It's a, like I say, a four-page application, it's not, it's not onerous for them to do so. Many of these roofing contractors are certified with multiple companies.
I'm going to jump in real quick because I don't think we're going to size this right now. I'm going to go to Counselor Maitre because we've got two other speakers that want to go and kind of watch in the clock, go ahead.
Counselor Maitre. So if we just go back to the charter, the charter says the purchasing agent on the basis of specifications prepared by the Department of Public Works or prepared by an architect or engineer engaged, engaged by resolution of city council. So are you saying that Public Works Department is the one that's bringing the specifications forward? Are you taking, are you, are you taking responsibility? Are you taking, are you, are you taking responsibility for bringing the specifications forward? Because we've never seen a resolution that now Garland is going to be your roofing manufacturer.
Correct. There is no, we have a baseline of performance that's set just by a Garland product. We prepare, we review those specifications and the contract requirements that go out. So yes.
So when you chose solely chose Garland.
Didn't solely choose Garland. Again, let me be very clear.
Okay, no way.
Keep going back to this. Let me be very.
No, no, no.
This is exactly.
As you just told us, you chose Garland because they offer you a service that no one else.
Saves the city thirty percent on every job.
So how do you expect? How do you expect an alternative to come forward when they don't offer the service that Garland offers? Such as the consulting, the engineering and the project management. So if they bring, if if another, if if a bidder brings another material um, manufacturer forward that meets the specification and they cannot meet the terms of um, roofing consultant, engineering and project management, that's just out. And then what if in your specifications, I'm not understanding how you feel as the Director of Public Works, that you are leaving an arms length transaction between you and the material manufacturer without um, having a third party consultant that we pay that protects the best interest of the city. Whether the material goes wrong or the installation goes wrong, it's protected under a certified stamp, engineering stamp. That's what we look for in all of our projects. Because that's how we turn around and we turn back to the engineer and we say, oh, you specified the wrong material.
Remember that the charter also requires that the Director of Public Works be a certified engineer.
So which of your certifying names, John?
So we put these out. So yes, they're under my charge when they go out, absolutely. They're not stamped by me. They're specs, they're roofing specs. They're just specifying the material and some details about how we put these roofs together. Now, the the specific question you're asking about is my arms length relationship as the city with these material vendors. We have to have a vendor supply materials. I don't know any other way to get a roof on without having a material supplier. But arms length means that we probably shouldn't be lining up contractors out here to come spew misinformation and talk to us about their concerns about.
Well, you know, Mr. Um, Hayes, I really resent that because you know what? I've been.
Why?
I I've been.
Heard the same thing.
Been a commercial estimator for a long time and I know how to read a specification. And I also know how the terms go when it comes to the statutory laws of the competitive bidding process.
Last week, we heard two roofing professionals come in, or three, I'm sorry. One of them sat here for three and a half minutes of their five minutes and talked about crime in Pueblo and tried to make some connection or implication that somehow there was something underhanded going on. Another one came in and was uh, trying to suggest that, again, there were, the city implied, didn't say it, but implied that the city is threatening contractors and not let him come in. That is not how we do business. I need to be clear. This is not how we do business.
Hold on. You can't keep on cutting her off when she's speaking.
Okay.
Okay, let her finish this and then you go, okay?
Perfect.
Uh, finish your question.
So when we get, when we get to that, yes, a third party engineer that does protect the best interest of the city and it is someone who that we fought, we can fall back on. Because otherwise, um, Mr. Hayes, if you make these decisions and maybe you don't understand the engineering of, maybe you don't, I don't know. But if you make these decisions, then we have nobody else to fall back on. The other thing I was thinking that was um, when you are the roofing consultant, just like when you are the engineer or the architect. And I've been to dozens of prebid meetings in my career. They are the ones who get up and speak. So I think that's what Mr. um, uh, Flores is alluding to is that they are the ones speaking. So when you, so what I'm saying to you is, how do you have roofing um, manufacturers show up to these and yet no one is, they're not bidding on it. They've been to the bid, you know, maybe we should have a copy of the bid walk sheets. Because the bid walk sheet will tell us how many manufacturers were to each of one of these meetings.
We don't get bid walk sheets, we get bids.
Well, I I understand, but you have to sign in because it's a mandatory meeting.
In your packet.
Oh, they are?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay.
They're in the back of each one of us, the attendee list for each one of those prebid meetings, along with the meeting agenda, I think, if he's one of us.
Uh, because I don't see them.
The thick packets in the last couple of papers.
Let me go to the ice arena.
It's like so, it's like this, very likely.
That starts about five or six pages from the back of the ice arena one. Three, four.
The other thing, too, um, well, I'm going through the that, I have another question to ask you, and that is regarding the time to be certified. So you send out a, a um, um, RFP. And the requirement is you have to be certified by Garland in order to bid on this job. Okay? If there's no alternatives, alternate, what's the time to be certified? Because if you don't meet it by the RFP deadline, then you can't submit. Because you're not certified, that's.
I'll say that generally speaking, if somebody comes in and finds some irregularity or conflict within our bidding specs or requirements that were pretty responsive to most vendors, especially if it was a mistake on our part. But again, you either have an option. You can either try to be certified with Garland if you want, or you can provide your own alternative.
But.
Who you're certified with.
How long is the RFP out for, Miss Headen?
Twenty one to thirty days typically.
Twenty one to thirty days.
It's the certification process. How long does that take?
I don't know what Garland's turnaround time is, but I don't imagine it's weeks. It's also a four page application.
They have to go and they have to visualize their work. There's inspections that take place. There's train, you have to go through training to be certified. So that means you have to be trained on one of their projects. So that's going to take more than thirty days. So that automatically, they can't submit a a bid because they're not certified.
So that's not at all how.
Longer than thirty days to be certified, that just kicks everybody out.
And that's not how Garland, I don't believe represented that in the room when they said if there are vendors out here who are not certified by Garland and you want to be.
Well, I mean, doesn't that, doesn't that concern you?
It would be.
Does that concern you?
Let me tell you what concerns me is the implication again, that something's going on here where there's not. The specific issue again is that the Garland's certification process or any manufacturer certification process takes a little bit of time to come back. It's in our best interest to make sure we have as much competition as possible to get the prices the right way, to get the best, the most qualified vendors out there. And so if we came to a place where there was a thirty day deadline for getting something in and we needed to extend it for two weeks to give somebody a little bit more time to allow for multiple vendors to get their certifications in because of some, you know, arduous process which doesn't exist, then we can, we can have that conversation. There's a question deadline, a question response deadline. Every contractor knows this. You've been through this process, no one's.
Yeah.
And the vendors that were here the other week, they know this. They've won awards from us. So they know, they're very familiar with the bidding process and how to do this job.
What I'm just going to throw in, I I don't know if you're going to figure out intent or not tonight. I don't know, because you know, we're all now running into the public meeting time. And I'm worried about the time element here. This wasn't a fifteen minute presentation, but I'm going to go to Council, I'm going to go to President Mark Aliff.
Uh, thank you. Thank you for the report and the abundance of information. Uh, that, that's good, that's good. Uh, I just wrote down a couple of things. Were you at their ice arena prebid?
I was not, no.
Okay, but you know what the guy said?
I have asked my staff about it, given the.
Okay, but you weren't there, right?
You're correct.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
I don't go to every.
All you know from your, from your testimony, or it's not even testimony, from your presentation, was that when we had a consultant that the city paid, Pueblo roofers got jobs. We now have Garland, who is our whatever, our consultant, and Pueblo roofers get no jobs. And maybe I'm I'm wrong in that, but when you look at the bids and you you see who gets the bids, it's it's not Pueblo people. And then I'm, I'm not going to whip a dead horse, but what Counselor Flores said is concerning. I had more than one person tell me at that prebid meeting. Uh, there was one city employee with his feet up on the desk that that uh, the guy from Garland ran the meeting. When he made his statements, you had thirty or forty people within the room and all but four or five of them left because of the comments that were made. I wasn't there. I have no idea. I'm just sharing information like you. So either the people who talk to me are lying or the people who talk to you are lying. But somebody, or maybe somewhere in between, there's the real truth. I don't know. But there's something. I mean, if this would happen to anybody through a bid process, there would be questions that would come up and say, why is it like this? How come it's like this? Even if you're, I I I heard from one roofer that who was Garland certified that put in uh, a, I guess there's a process that you can put in with your, your, uh, he needed material estimates, didn't even get the estimates back from Garland. So again, I don't know if this, it's the truth. I'm just telling you what somebody's telling me. So if he doesn't get the estimates back, it seems to me, because this was a Pueblo roofer, that Garland didn't want the Pueblo roofer to get the job. And he's given it to the Colorado Springs roofers. I'm just saying it looks bad. Whether it uh, whether it is bad or not, who knows? But it 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 just seems, it just seems uh, like it's not on the up and up. That's all I have.
Okay, I just want to go to Council Latino, please.
Thank you. I would like to echo with my fellow council men and women of said. Council Flores, Councilwoman Maestri, Councilman Aliff. Um, it sounds like it's the anaconda sona phanana with the double riddle rattle. Uh, always, I'm always, I've always been attuned to having more than one bid, at least two or three in the systems that I've worked in. And so it's very concerning to me. Um, and so I I am where they are with with this whole thing.
Just to make sure I heard, did you say that there was only one bid?
I said, we're talking about Garland, are we not?
There were seven, uh, six bids on one project, five bids on the other.
Talking about, we're talking about having a number of uh.
A supplier, a material vendor.
Right, material bidders.
All of those, all of those five or six submitted with Garland as their, as their proposed material supplier. Nobody submitted an alternative, if that's what you're, yes, that's correct.
We're going to go to the mayor first and then we're going to go to Council Maestri.
Thank you, Chair. Um, just to add some concerning things after looking over the list of the roofers that were actually at the uh, the bid walkthrough, I do find it concerning that one of these roofers is Counselor Maestri's uh, domestic partner, as the charter would say. And that several of these roof projects have gone through city council previously, have been awarded by this exact city council and never brought any attention to it. And so on behalf of the city, I would ask tonight why this council is asking questions now on these roofs, uh, because from what it appears, like President Aliff states, is it's because Counselor Maestri's domestic partner did not successfully get these bids on these two roofs. And you can see he's listed in these prebid meetings. So that would be something that would be appeared as concerning since this council has passed resolution after resolution awarding roof after roof after roof in the last eighteen months to several people who are on this bid walkthrough, to Counselor Maestri's uh, domestic partner, and then only tonight on these two roofs, the city council now has concern. So I would say that that appears a concern to the community.
In fairness, Council Maestri, please, next.
You know, somebody um, couldn't make those accusations. I think really what is going on here is um, we did not bid on those roofs. Okay, we, so we were, it's not that we weren't accepted, we did not bid on the roofs.
Because you were not certified by Garland.
Um, well, we could have been if it was that easy, right? So um, what I'm here to say is that what happens is at that point, cost of materials can be controlled. And they could be set any way that they want to be set, as high as they want to be set. When Garland is the only one, they are specifying their material. Um, they're pushing out the alternates. And so we don't really know if roofs cost less because everyone has to use the Garland materials. So we don't know in general if a DF roof or an Owens Corning or the other manufacturers that you state, maybe their prices are lower. Maybe they're more competitive. There has to be no competitive, compet- competition in the pricing of the material because there's no competition in the bid. So I think it just really kind of boils down to that. Um, there are, there are roofers that could offer um, less expensive um, pricing possibly because the materials. There's no competition on the Garland market when you have just one material and you push out the alternates. And so that's, that's how it looks. And um, I guess we'll have to see. Because the gentleman that was here, he um, that spoke, he is from Cernfield. He sells the Cernfield materials.
Mr., excuse me, Mr. Hayes, before you respond, Carlos Sax has been patiently waiting over there. Carlos Sax, go ahead.
So I I just wanted to make a a comment that using a uh, material supplier like this is a common practice throughout the state, throughout the country, by municipalities. It is an accepted practice. What the the manufacturer is doing is setting minimum standards. And by putting a manufacturer in your contract, you are telling people what the minimum standards are that you have to meet. In addition to that, in our contracts, we also set out the specifications in more detail. So they know what what type of membrane and the thickness and things like that that they need. They then have the ability to price shop with other manufacturers that they may already have an existing relationship with to see if they can come in at a lower price or have a a same or like material. So that this is, I I know council is concerned, but I just wanted to let you know that this is a common practice um, that that governmental entities do. This is not unique to Pueblo. And what they are setting is minimum standards. So if they're setting minimum standards, it would make sense to have the material supplier on site during the walkthrough to talk about what the minimum standards are. And to answer questions about alternatives to that, if anybody had it. Can we use this thickness instead of that thickness? Can we use this membrane instead of that membrane? Would this be comparable? So it makes sense to have that person on site to answer those questions. So that's, that's all I wanted to.
So Maestri. So we go back to the one very important specification and an alternate cannot um, cannot fulfill. And they cannot offer the, being the roofing consultant, they do not offer being the roofing consultant doing the engineering.
They're not asked to do that because by this point, the engineering has been completed.
Oh, so it's going to be.
Consulting, the consulting has been set, the specifications. So what Garland is doing for the city to avoid that extra cost by the expert that we had before is to provide the consulting and to help uh, come up with the specification. So that part of, that part of the process is done. Um, so another manufacturing doesn't necessarily need to come in and do that for the city. They wanted to do that for the individual contractor and say, we've looked at Garland's specifications and we can meet those and we can meet those at this price. Those specifications are there. They can take those specifications to Owens Corning, which was another uh, alternative that was offered earlier. They can take those and say, can you meet those? And if you can, what is your price?
What about the project management?
So the project management, I would think, would be inherent in the contract. The roofer that gets the project has to provide project management.
No, there's a project management and the project management comes from the city side. Garland represents the city as their project manager.
If the city, the city would be responsible for project management. If it's Garland's project, they can be out there inspecting the project as it goes to make sure that the person that is installing the roof is installing it pursuant to their specifications. So they can go out and they can assist the city. But ultimately, it's a city that is doing the inspections. The city is responsible for making sure progress is done and it's done correctly in conjunction with Garland. If it wasn't Garland, it would be Owens Corning representative out there on the roof making sure that during the the construction process, that that their their specification. That that their, their specifications were being followed. Um, and so that is, that is the common practice.
You know, that's really kind of what, um, I think concerns the citizens of anything else, you know, because it allows for kickbacks. Because we're only specifying one product and when we only have one product. Um, it doesn't allow for competition to come in on the materials cost side of it. And so that it actually sways the cost of the roof, the project in general.
I'm gonna give the final comment to, we had to break really, Counselor Flores, that you wrapped us up.
You know, my, my only interest in this whole process and, and I. Uh, I had a career in writing contract bonds for general contractors and every kind of subcontractor. And I don't have the expertise that any of you have, uh, in these specifications, uh, and, and all of the intricacies. It just, uh, occurs to me that if you focus everything on what's best for the city. And that it's going to be, um, number one, a quality product, whatever we are bidding out. And that we, uh, uh, you know, get it at a reasonable price. Cause it's not always goes to the lowest bidder. There's other variables. My only interest in this is that there's a level playing field. Secondly, that there isn't an appearance of, of, of conflicts here. But when you have a rep, I'm not convinced that Garland and their representatives aren't, uh. Influencing this process more than you normally would see. Uh, I'm not convinced that, that we should be selecting, uh, roofing material in this method. Uh, I guess we could do that for police cars that we're only gonna buy Fords now. Or, or, you know, we can, we can do that with something else. It just doesn't seem right to me that you would have a representative. That gets a commission off of the sale of the material, kind of dictating on top of this walkthrough. What, you know, what these other contractors that are competing with him. And that he's up there kind of selling an alternative roofing material. I don't, I don't see that person. And why is he semi-representing the city to begin with? Uh, that I don't understand at all. And, uh, I, I'm having a real, a, a real problem.
Let me just jump in here a quick. I think Counselor Flores and Counselor Maestri's objections are noted now. Um, we're gonna give one final statement because we've got to adjourn. We're gonna go to Carla Sykes and this will be the last comment. Thank you.
So I just wanted to point out that anytime contractors bid on a project, whether it's for a roofing project or it's for construction of a new building. Um, they take the materials into account. They get materials at their least cost to include into the project. And that is all incorporated in the bid. And as a matter of our code, we do take the lowest bidder on our public works projects. And we're required to take the lowest bidder on our public works projects. So it is always the lowest bidder and regardless of what material they're going out there and getting. They're, they're incorporating those material costs into their contract and, and they're going to maximize their profit. So wherever they're, wherever they're getting their products, their incentive is to shop for the, the lowest cost product, uh, product. At the specifications the city has required. And it doesn't matter if it's a two-by-four or if it's a roof. Um, that's, that's incorporated into their bid. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Okay. Thank you for your comments, everybody. We're gonna adjourn, come back at seven thirty-five. We're adjourned.